Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement is back from recess. It is now 1:30 PM, Thursday, October 29, 2015. Present with me today is Senator Nerissa B. Underwood. Thank you, Senator, for joining us. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on the executive appointment of Mr. David J. Matanani to serve as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Also, we will be hearing five bills, Bills 192, 193, 194, 195, and 196, all introduced by myself, which proposes to transfer properties back into the Chamorro Land Trust Commission land inventory. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 PM on Friday, November 6, 2015. Please address testimony to Senator Thomas Hatta, Chairman, Committee on Lands. And we're going to go ahead and we'll start now with the executive appointment of Mr. David J. Matanani. Do we have any -- thank you. I have here signing up to present oral testimony is Mr. Michael Borja. So if you go ahead and step forward, please, and then I'll -- after you finish, I'll call Mr. Matanani forward.
Good morning, Mr. -- good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Vice Speaker, Madam Senator, my name is Mike Borja. I am the Administrative Director of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. On the confirmation for Mr. David Matanani for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission as a member, I offer my support to confirm Mr. Matanani as a Commissioner to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. He has been a distinguished Commissioner to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission since February of 2004. His decision -- his dedication and devotion to his civic duty as a Commissioner is reflected in his sterling attendance and his passion for enhancing the trust to ensure it remains a viable organization, to fulfill its tasks, and to protect the Chamorro homelands. Mr. Matanani's background in finance is a strong asset to the trust. He has always stressed on the financial accountability and strong management of trust activities. In the last year, he has served as the Chairman of the trust as it pursued the passage of the commercial rules and regulations. Now with the passage of the CLTC rules and regulations, Mr. Matanani's contribution as Commissioner will be core in moving the trust forward as we conduct the preliminary requirements prior to engaging in commercial leases that will directly affect our very patient residential and agricultural lease applicants. It has been my pleasure to work with Mr. Matanani as a former CLTC Commissioner and now as the Administrative Director of the CLTC. I trust his advice and his opinion and firmly believe he will continue to be a strong and contributing member to the Commission. I humbly ask this committee's -- this committee to favorably report his nomination and to ask the legislature to swiftly confirm Mr. Matanani's nomination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. I guess if there's -- I don't have any questions and nobody has any questions. Thank you very much. I'd like to go ahead and call for now the nominee, Mr. David Matanani. First of all, I thought I had my math right. I thought this was just your third three-year appointment, which means you would have been starting your seventh year. But Mr. Borja said that you have been serving since 2004? So that's 11 years. Boy, you're probably one of the longest members. Okay, very good. Well, thank you for the --
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for the dedicated service. Before we start, I wanted to take care of some housekeeping stuff. But before I even get to that, I want to recognize Vice Speaker BJ Cruz and Senator Anthony Hatta. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining us. Mr. Matanani, I just wanted to take care of some housekeeping here. In the packet that you provided, there was some information discrepancy, and I'm going to point it out, and then hopefully you'll go back and take a look at the packet that was submitted so we can get it rectified. In the packet that you submitted, in the column there that asked for prior government service, Gov.Guam service, you stated not applicable. But then in another block where it asks for employment history, you show that you basically had 10 years of service with the Department of Revenue and Taxation from 1987 to 1997. But then in going back to your 2011 appointment packet, it showed that you had actually worked with revenue and tax from 1968 to 1997. That was 30 years. And so I just need you to take back that packet and reconcile those dates, okay? If, in fact, you worked 30 years, then so annotate that on your form. You also need to take a look at the -- I believe it was on your police clearance or the -- yeah, the police clearance and the Superior Court documents. The date of birth, they don't jive. Could have been a typo, but please look at that. There's normally in the packet is included the Certificate of Financial Disclosure Report, which you received from the Guam Election Commission. Now, we did call the Election Commission. You did file your disclosure, and you indicated in those forms that you had no conflict of interest. So -- but we still need to get that documentation to -- and I suggest that, you know, that sort of stuff, the Administrative Director can have one of his staff go and pick that up for you. Finally, the appointment document, the appointment letter that came down from the Governor's office was appointing you to be a member of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Now, in the Chamorro Land Trust law, the Governor appoints who the Chairman is. And so I'm just wondering, has a new Chairman been appointed? Or do you anticipate to be reappointed? Or are you just going to be a member this time?
It's up to the Governor if --
Okay, but you're not aware of being reappointed as a Chairman?
No.
Okay, fine. Good enough. All right. So with that, why don't we go ahead and provide your -- any kind of opening remarks? And then after that, the members may have questions that you could possibly -- maybe you could respond to. Okay?
It would be -- all right, if I explain the gap on those years of service now?
No need. Just reconcile because you got one packet that said you had 30 years of service, and then you had another packet that said you only had 10 years of service. So, you know, if you really had 30 years, just put down 30 years so that we don't see two different things, okay?
That's fine. Yes, typo or turning over the page and it's on the other side.
I could have been mistaken.
Thank you very much, Senator. Yes, yes. Okay. Well, good afternoon, Senator Chairman, and thank you for those items that I guess overlooked or I didn't really read. It was just so, you know, early, putting out, you know, put out the documentation for the appointment or requesting for renewal. So I believe that's the reason why we overlook those things, and we shouldn't be doing that. I shouldn't be doing that and trying to overlook those documents.
Well, if you read the paper this morning,
Yes.
you know why we wouldn't want to overlook things.
Yes, sir. All right. Mr. Chairman, Senator Underwood, Senator Cruz, and Senator Hatta, good afternoon. I only wanted to thank the Governor for that reappointment of three years as a member of the Chamorro Land Trust. I would like to thank the Governor for that. You know, I submitted an application and he didn't make the appointment. Thank you for that, Governor. And also I would like to thank my family for supporting me on this reluctantly. They don't want me to stress out on these things, this matter, getting too old for that. But hey, that's what, you know, I indicated that I will take care of that. So my family is here, and thanks for the support, my girls. Another thing I would like to thank the Director Borja, the Executive Director of Chamorro Land Trust, the Staff and Management of Chamorro Land Trust and Land Management for their support also during my dinner. And also I would like to thank the trustees, the trustee Amanda Santos, Ms. Gualle Sablan, and Joe Cruz. Hope to join them again if possible, if it would be possible. And then I would like to thank the Senators also for hearing my confirmation on this. And with the approval of the rules and regulations, we will be moving forward, hopefully that we can do the best we can. And I hope that the confirmation will be favorable from the Senators. Thank you. She just must.
Thank you, Mr. Matanani. I'll go ahead and ask the first question. And of course, you know, it's been, what, it took probably about almost eight weeks before we finally got going through the process of getting a set of rules and regulations approved, passed by the legislature, and now it's down in the Governor's office. And I don't want to speculate on what he's going to do with it. But have you had a chance to read Bill 175 that was passed?
No, Senator, I haven't.
You haven't?
After that, I was just inquiring to -- Mike, could you probably give me a copy of that so I can go over it? But I guess you already sent it in for --
Yeah, so I think it's already been -- well, we voted on it yesterday. It's probably transmitted already over there. But the Executive Administrative Director has a copy of it. And I know that you were out of term already when we were discussing the bill. But I recommend that you get a copy of that as soon as possible so you can start taking a look at it. But I guess basically, notwithstanding the fact that you haven't had a chance to look at Bill 175, what generally is your position on leasing out Chamorro Land Trust property for commercial activities to the public, which means to include non-Chamoros?
Non-Chamoros?
That's what the law allows for?
For commercial.
For commercial activities.
But I don't know if it's in the 175 where a certain -- on the organization, the corporate, that there will be one Chamorro. I don't know if it's in there.
So just give me your general position as to --
Well, we don't go out and really solicit. They come in and ask, whose property is that? We would like to lease it. But we don't really go out there and solicit for any type of business. They indicate which part of Guam they want to do business with. Not Chamorro Land Trustes say, hey, we got a piece of land here. Do you want to do business in this particular next to the coral pit or whatnot? But they come in and, you know, they ask if they -- what can they do to lease that piece of property and how big is it? And that's how the -- our, you know, the consumer wants to lease the piece of property for commercial use. Other than that, I don't know. I don't believe the Executive Director has some people go marketing those plans. But of course, if they come in and inquire, we will entertain it.
Of course, the -- you pretty much, the Chamorro Land Trust has a partner relationship with the Guam Economic Development Authority to go out and find potential tenants for Chamorro Land Trust property. Okay, well, I hope that you get a copy of Bill 175, you know, as soon as possible so you can start taking a look at that. Does anybody -- okay, Vice Speaker?
Good afternoon, Mr. Matanani.
Good afternoon, Senator.
I was very happy to hear the Administrative Director extol your value on the Commission because of your financial background. And if I can have staff -- can you get this down? With all your years in revenue and taxation, you could probably read this better than I can, and you can explain it. What I presented to you, there are three different sheets of paper. One is the Chamorro Land Trust Commission Revenue and Expenditure Report for the period ending September 30, 2013. And one is for the period ending 2014. And then one that combines both. I should have marked it A, B, and C. Here, there's another set here. You don't need to go anywhere. I figured that since the Administrative Director was the one that extolled the value of Mr. Matanani as a financial expert --
Not an expert, sir.
-- well, that he values your -- I note, if you look at the 2013, one that says 2013, it says commercial revenue was 722, correct? Do you see that one sheet?
On Chamorro, I mean, the combined statement or?
Yeah. It -- well, there's one sheet that says, just on the top says 2013.
2013, yeah.
It says your revenue that year was 722. Do you see that?
722, yes.
And then you look at the one that's marked combining, but it has 2014 at the top in larger letters. But it says that your rental revenue was 534. I was going to ask why the difference, but then I see on the third sheet, it says that you have receivables of $199,000.
One million?
No. Receivables is 199,000, which I guess is the difference, which is the difference between the 722 and the reduction in 2014 to 534.
You're looking at the asset side, 199, 182?
At the very -- yeah, at the assets, right under cash and cash equivalents, there's a receivable that shows 199. Were you aware that the Chamorro Land Trust has receivables in the amount of 199,000?
Well, I figured this one year, there's some leases that are out there still outstanding and payments remain. We do have receivables.
In 13, you did, I imagine, that there were no receivables.
Oh.
Well, no, I'm not saying. In 2013, you show that you guys collected 722.
In 2013, yes.
In 2014, you show that you're collecting 534.
Uh-huh. Lower than the previous year.
Yeah. It's about 200,000, which is that 199.
Yeah, we didn't do so well, yes.
Do you know who those tenants are?
No, sir. The details is in, I guess, the bookkeeping. When I receive this, it's the same way as well as you are receiving it. But I don't go to the details. But I will question whether, do we have that much receivables? Yeah. This is the whole figure.
Do you get a report at your meetings as to who's delinquent in their rental payments?
Yes. And there is receivables. There are receivables.
And how much were you told that were delinquent at the end of 2014?
You have to be specific as to the month, maybe?
Well, at the end of September of 2014, last year. Do you remember how much was?
In receivables?
Yeah.
No, sir.
What do you guys do when someone's delinquent? What does the board do when a commercial lease is delinquent?
Well, you know, the Executive Director and the staff would have to look at it and see and try and collect that amount of money. What's due to Chamorro Land Trust.
And do you -- does the Commission direct the Executive Director to make that collection?
Of course, yes, yes. If, you know, certain individual or certain individual or leases are behind, of course we will have to give them a letter of, hey, you're behind. And of course, also the agent of the council will show how far back or how late they are.
And in the 11 years that you served on the Commission, how many times do you recall the delinquency being so grievous that you, as a Commission, terminated the lease?
As far as the termination, no. We'll try and work it out. I believe none that we have terminated any lease on those type of impression.
Delinquent accounts, you can't remember in the 11 years ever terminating a lease?
No.
On the top of, above that 199, were you aware as Chairman of the Commission that the Chamorro Land Trust had $1,999,705 in cash and cash equivalents?
I believe when I received the report, yes. And there was a big amount of payment, which I don't recall who's the big payment that was made on that time, September, the last fiscal year, so two fiscal years, last fiscal year, yes. I know there was a substantial payment made from one of the leasing, leasing.
And what is your understanding of what you're supposed to be using this cash and cash equivalent for?
It is for the operation. Of course, it's there. We try and build up also our funds for the home loans and also our guaranteed program.
Yeah, the home loan is a completely different column, as you can see there. That one's just the Chamorro Land Trust Operations Fund. So what were you told or what was your understanding in these last 11 years that one, that the Chamorro Land Trust Fund was supposed to be used for, Operations Fund was supposed to be used for?
For the operations.
Operations such as?
As a big, like, for instance, the surveying and also, of course, other expenses that incur.
Do you recall as Chairman, when the last time you directed the Administrative Director to use any substantial part of this $1.9 million in cash for surveys?
No. I've never told him to use that. We were kind of worried about the home loan guarantee program. As a matter of fact, I told him to go and look into it and find out whether we still owe that amount of millions of dollars that we guaranteed on, which we didn't know that there were all that big guarantees for certain type of loans.
But on the, for the Chamorro Land Trust Fund, not the Operations Fund, I mean, the loan fund guarantee, which is next column? Where, what is your understanding you're supposed to be using this for? I'm very happy you started off by saying surveys. When was the last time the Commission directed the Executive Director to do any surveys?
We told the Executive Director that if we have the money and you have the survey to, I mean, the money to have it surveyed, then you should, you know, procure that.
Ostensibly, the rules and regulations so that you could lease some more commercial land was to raise money for surveys. You have almost $2 million in the bank already. Now, today, why isn't and wasn't that used to conduct surveys?
We have received this kind of recently, it's not the past couple of years, but more recently as the 2014. Those million dollars wasn't in there till just the last year.
And within the last year, did you direct any surveys to be conducted? Or were you guys more concerned about raising more money by leasing more commercial property when you're already receiving $700,000 a year in commercial leases, which can and should be used towards surveys?
I always thought that if we have enough money to survey, we will survey it. I mean, you know, you have to, I guess, utilize the outside surveyors if you need to procure outside surveyors to do that, to pay them. Because at one point in time, we tell the Chamorro landowners to go and survey it on their own and put out the expense so we could, you know, get it going. But other than that, of course, we'll look into that and find out this time around, we have the money and, like you said, make sure that they better go and survey those piece of property or whatever is not surveyed.
In the two other sheets that you have there, one shows that you're making at least three-quarters of a million dollars a year in commercial lease rental, 722, maybe not 750. All right, so 722 is -- and you -- and this year, the same thing. I mean, the -- I'm just trying to figure out what that money is being used for if not for the surveys.
Senator, these are accumulations from, you know, years as you bring it forward. That's the --
I understand, but just the last two years, one year in 2013, you collected 722.
I don't know whether it would be enough to have the whole Chamorro Land Trust property surveyed.
I understand. It may not be the whole. But how many surveys could be done with 722,000?
I have no idea, Senator.
Has anybody, any member of the Commission asked that question?
Mr. Chairman, may I assist the Commissioner of Chamorro?
I'm not sharing. I'm -- I'm fine.
Senator Cruz, the monies that would be showing on here, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission does not have the authority to appropriate its own money. We do not have a checking account to write our own checks. We seek appropriation from this body on an annual basis in our budget request. In this last, in this current budget, we requested $850,000 for the purpose of surveying and doing land registration. Do we know how much it's going to cost to do our surveys? Yes, we do. We estimate it's going to cost approximately $1 million. And we were looking at doing that over the course of three years. So $350,000 was an amount we had requested for survey. $500,000 is the amount that the Attorney General has given us for the cost of doing land registrations because there's still a considerable amount of that land. The Chamorro Land Trust Commission does not appropriate its own money. The monies it collects from leases and other amounts it collects for fees go into an account that is identified for the Chamorro Land Trust, but it's not in an account that we can write a check on.
Well, I'm glad you decided to come forward.
Senator, could you please tell me Senator, could you please tell me what is the source of this document?
The government-wide audit.
Okay, thank you.
And before the 15th of the month, Mr. Mettenani, is the budget of the Chamor Land Trust cleared with the commission? Do you vote on the budget and the allocation for the budget? What's the standard operating procedure for the commission? Is it, does it determine what the budget for the commission is supposed to be? Or?
No, the executive director prepares the budget, put it in front of us, and if it's good to submit, we tell them, go ahead and submit it. I mean, you know, and see if that particular amount is requested for, then that's the request.
Do you guys ever ask what is being budgeted for?
No, Senator, no. But we would request for the executive director to think of the people that are working for him or doing their job. Hopefully, that they also be considered. Sometimes I hear that people there are stagnant and on their salary, where you need to look into so people will be retained rather than moving out. As far as the budget is concerned, it is incumbent upon the director to see what his needs are and request for it.
I realize, Mr. Mettenani, I'm almost tempted to say unfortunately, I was the one that midwifed the birth of this. I'm getting pretty close to regretting my decision. Because it was my understanding when I ruled was that the land was to be given to the people and that the commercial leases, if any, was to be used to survey land so that they could be distributed to people. And we're collecting 722,000 at least a year. I mean, even if I add the delinquent account for 2014, it comes out to pretty close, it's 722,000, 25,000. And we've been in a fight for the last three months over rules and regulations for more commercial lease authority so that you can collect money, which I now understand you can't control. And.
Senator?
I'm trying to figure out why we're not getting it to the people. But I'll just ask, just so I can get another thing on the record. The other day I was, on the 15th of October, we were presented with the allocation of the funds for Chamor Land Trust. That's the last sheet of paper that you got. And are you able to explain why we're, the Chamor Land Trust is almost doubling its personnel cost?
I can, sir, if you don't mind. On the last three consecutive audit reports from the Office of Public Accountability, they stated in each, in each, in every case repeatedly that we need to increase the manpower in the Chamor Land Trust Commission in order to conduct the compliance and enforcement of our leases, both residential, agricultural, and commercial. And that we needed also stand up a property and financial management section in order to maintain all the properties and then to coordinate with the Department of Revenue and Taxation for the process so we can also account for all the property taxes for each and every piece of property that's under the trust inventory. That is not, we are not able to do that with the existing manpower that we have. We're barely able to handle the people that we have and then be able to, I mean, the constituents that come in to apply, because we can't even go out and do any enforcement or compliance. When we do do that, it's because of something that comes to our attention that we have to go out and investigate. But we don't have the ability unless we're, there's some issue that pops up where we go out in force to go look at an area to determine what a problem, a possible problem might be.
And so how many additional people did you pick up between 15 and 16?
We were given an authorization in the last fiscal year for some LTAs. We've used those LTAs to assist us with the process of doing the survey. In the course of almost a whole year, we have been able to develop and create 89 subdivisions in a master plan of all our properties, something that's never been done. It's signed off by the Guam Land Use Commission and the Chamor Land Trust Commission. And in doing that, it takes considerable manpower, not only to go out and to do all that drawing. So we have people within the survey division that were appropriated to do that as well. We have people that came in that are also assisting in the planning. So we used the personnel types that were given in that authorization to be able to go and try and get the additional manpower we needed so we could get a lot of these things done. It was a labor-intensive activity that basically had to stop almost many things that happened within the Department of Land Management as well as the Chamor Land Trust Commission in order to complete this project. And we're happy to say that we got it done, but it's still, you know, a little bit of a work in progress. But on the whole, we got most of it done, and that's not an easy feat, sir.
As a result of all these additional people, how many more leases were you able to issue to residential?
Well, this is the problem, sir. When I came in, we had 3,000 leases, of which a whole thousand of them had fatal legal flaws in them because of the way they were distributed. In order to even, and we had to fix those. Those were identified by the public auditor as major problems legally and in every other way, even in tax purposes. So we had to fix problems before we could take steps forward. We don't have, we have people sitting on unregistered properties, and we had to fix those as well. It's the same kind of questions that you asked me before on why are we giving expedited leases to people? It's because we discovered that there's an issue that was pre-existing and out of our control that we had to legitimize. You'll get that information here, hopefully, tomorrow morning. But the manpower levels that we would like to see actually has to increase by a few more bodies, because I really, one of the other individuals we were able to hire from that is someone who came from REVEN Tax Real Property Division. Because we need that kind of expertise as well so we can stand up this financial management section so we can collate all the tax information from the property taxes, because that's what's being mandated by the public auditor on the Chamor Land Trust Commission. We hold today, in their latest estimate, over $700 million in land assets. And there's a responsibility required in having that considerable amount of assets. And it's a financial responsibility that we're already well underway and still trying more to make it better. But it's a process that's taken quite a while. And as you know, those three.
And in the budget that you submitted to BBMR, I noted you're now paying $315,000 a year for rent in the building?
This is a portion of, it was never charged rent. And this is a contention as well with the public auditor, because we don't have a specific lease with the building to show that the Chamor Land Trust should have, should be paying a certain amount. And the reason we don't is because the Chamor Land Trust was incorporated under land management, and therefore, we determined that from the square footage amount for the total we pay, this is how much their share would be. We're still in a problem, even if we got, even with a letter from the, we're not paying anything extra to, in the overall lease, we're just allocating that portion of it to the Chamor Land Trust.
Since you're wearing both hats as the director of DLM and the administrative director of land management, was the board made aware that your rent was going to go from $210,000 last year to $315,000 this year?
Did I share that information? No, I probably did not. But in the finition of doing all this stuff, this was through, in our audits that we did with the public auditor, which you got the results here, it was five, four and a half years' worth of information done in one year. And so from the time the first one came out in August of 2014 to the last one that came out in September of 2015, it was a consecutive barrage of write-ups saying, do this, do this, do this. And as we got from one step to, from one audit to the other, activities were underway, but were not complete, so therefore, there were repeated write-up. But those were the kinds of things that they were telling us we had to get done along the way. So it was issues that were brought up and, you know, shame on me for not explaining it as clearly to the commissioners, but we did provide them too with copies of the audit reports.
Because it just seems to me we are building a fiefdom of workers.
I totally disagree, sir, I totally disagree.
I'm trying, when I try to compare it with the number of leases that went out, over the entire term that this administration's been in, I counted the number of leases that were issued since 2011, 350. Okay? I'm happy with 300 of them, because they all had dates of application 1999, I mean, 1995, some of them up to 98. All right, I couldn't go all the way back then to try to highlight all of those for the staff to take out. But it was easy to ask the staff to go, my staff, to go through and find me all the ones where. Let me ask you, Mr. Chairman, what's the process of approving leases? How do you guys go about approving leases? What's the procedure? How does that happen?
The application comes in, they're checked out whether they have the Chamor lot in them, and then it goes through the process to where they indicate where the land is at and what are they requesting for, whether commercial or, I mean, residential or agricultural.
And with the residential ones, is there something in the standard operating procedure that requires any commissioner to state if they have a conflict of interest with voting on a lease? Because either they're related to the applicant?
No, Senator, no. The executive director, they are the ones that are doing the process. And it doesn't, the commissioner doesn't go down there and try and tell them, but, you know, I have a conflict with this or I have a conflict with that.
But it never comes up to you to vote on it?
No, we don't vote for them. I mean, you know, we expect the administrative director to get it going and get that leases out.
So what does the board do?
Only when there's a problem with it, and then you have to, need a board approval, then it comes up to us. And we iron out the problems and see what we can do to help the leasing lesson.
Okay. So you have had some where there were problems?
Oh, yes, definitely, yes, Senator.
Mr. Borhan knows what these are, because I've asked for you. But I was trying to figure out, as a member of the commission, as the, and these were done within the last two years, you were a member when all of these were approved. When, when these were approved, did, were packets brought in to the commissioners explaining why this individual who applied in 2013 was being bumped to the front of the line? See, the application dates on these are 2011 to 2013. Were the commissioners informed that these applications were not from 1995 or 1996 or 1997, but actually had applied in 2011, 2012, and 2013? Were you aware that you had approved leases of individuals who applied in 2011, 2012, and 2013?
I believe the Gridus had that lease. The father had given the kids, and they wanted to divide the properties on that particular lease. So that is for 2013, but it is already comprised of one lease.
And so, I'm glad that you actually, I'm impressed that you remember that one. I'm just wondering if you remember receiving packets on each one of those so that you understood why they were being bumped to the front of the line?
No, now, some days maybe, but I don't recall. The Gridus kind of stand out, because I remember, you know, the father had that lease for a long time. Fathers, and, you know, we told him to maybe go into the, and before he passed away, he would like to divide the land itself and have the kids own the land itself. But I don't remember getting a, you know, any, not to my recollection, to, you know, receiving packages that on the 2013. I'm pretty sure that there must be a reason why on the 2013, when they do look into the folders of this particular piece of property, probably there must be a good reason for it to be entertained.
I would hope.
I hope so too, Senator.
Was it presented to the board? Does the board have to approve each one of these? Or is this all left to the administrative director?
Some, yes, sometimes if the administrative director can take care of it and not really, and he knows that it's been right, then he should go ahead with it and not, you know, wait for us to meet the next month or whatever. Because we do understand, Senator, that we meet only once a month in order for him to give us packages or inform us of those things. So, but he would, you know, remind us that he has, is actually doing his best to do a good job on it.
No, I have no question about that. I'm just saying, of the 350 leases, I only had issues with about 44. And of those 44, these 15 stand out to me because of the very, very late date of their application, 11, 12, and 13. And so I was just wondering if the commission itself, the four commissioners are presented with packets saying, this is the reason why I need your approval to approve this lease, a vote to approve this lease?
Usually, on a case-by-case basis, on a monthly, he will present it to us, and then we will look at it and then make a determination as to telling the executive director to go ahead and do the process. But he will bring it up to us once a month, and then we will approve of it. And if I remember correctly, because the Gridus and there are others that has come up to the board pleading for their, you know, to get that thing straightened out because of all the, you know, past, they were just giving land without even a lease. Just remember that. I mean, they've been staying on that land for the longest time because somebody told him that he can stay there. What, what happened? So like you said, we're trying to put up, we're trying to crack it, and we're not going to go ahead and do everything we can. and do everything we can. We have to start from there, and we smooth it out. We don't want to come back to that thing unless we finish.
And I'm just, and these issues are brought to the Commission, you vote on these individually?
Yes, Senator, yes.
And, um, do you remember in the 11 years that you've been there of Commissioners? I, I'm really intrigued by the fact that there's no conflict of interest issues. If, if a Commissioner's son or grandson is making an application, does the Commissioner have to tell the, the Board? I mean, the Commission that, this, this, "I cannot vote on this one, because this is my son," or "This is my, my daughter," or?
I do remember quite a few years back, when my auntie came in, and I excused myself. I do remember that.
Okay. No, I'm, I'm very happy to hear that, but I'm just trying to figure out, as, as a matter of course, are, are the, are the Commissioners advised that this application is the application of a grandchild of one of the Commissioners, they should be aware? I mean, because I remember when we were doing the-
If he knows that it's his first cousin, he should excuse himself, sir.
Okay, and-
I, I'm not going to go and ask him, "Are you, what blood?" I don't know whether he's-
Okay.
You know, but for as far as we're concerned, and I hope not, that, you know, other Commissioners would, would think of that, that, you know. Like I said, I don't know whether it's Joe, or the other Directors back then, when sometimes I would excuse myself, and not participate in the discussion.
Is, is there anything in the standard operating procedures for the Commission, for the Commission to be informed that the application involves someone working at Department of, Department of Land Management?
Just recently, that the-
Well, I mean, you've been there 11 years now. I'm just saying, has the standard, you've been there almost since the beginning. So whenever, whenever a, a member of the staff at Department of Land Management has an application before, before, I mean, they may have applied, been one of the first ones to apply in 1995, and should, are properly in place, and should get it, but do, are you guys informed of that? That this person is a, is an employee of the Department of Land Management, and that the Board should be aware of it? The Director, the Administrative Director informs you that this is, this is all above board and, and clear that there was no favoritism for this person?
Only when, when the late Montemomnas was consolidated, when it was consolidated, the Land Management, Chamor, Land Trust, and Ancestral, that, at the point in time, but we never entertained Land Management's application, sir. I don't get it that-
No, not Land Management's application, but say, a, a member of the Department of Land Management has an application in.
Well, to me, Senator-
Has the Board, is the Board told that?
To me, Senator, if he applies in 1995, why should we question that?
No, I, I'm, I'm saying, I agree, if they were, but I'm just saying, was it at least brought to the attention of the Commissioners?
Not at all.
That's, so that you don't get embarrassed later of people asking, "How come you, you approved B.J. Cruz's application?"
No, not-
During my tenure as the Commissioner, when I first started in 2011, the Administrative Director advised us that there were, when, when they, he went through and came into the job, he went through all the staff of COTC, uncovered who had properties, and how they obtained it, and where they was, and what the size was, and took action at the time, because he did find that there was some, some activity that occurred prior to his arrival that were very, very suspect and very, very suspicious. And, and it resulted in several people either being terminated or quitting. And so they took that action at that time, and today we still do that. In fact, these leases that when they, that are anomalies and odd, odd, and unusual cases or requests, when they have come to me as, when I, after I assumed the position as Administrative Director, I didn't take it upon myself to approve these things, I brought it to the Commission. So you'll find in one of these, in two of these individuals that were listed, like Mr. Montanani said, in the case of the Gridos, this was a case which was an anomaly. An original land use permit that was a couple acres large. The grandfather divided it amongst two, and they, those two wanted to subdivide it to their sons. And it was a practice which I did not encourage and did not, did not, would not approve, but I brought it to the Commissioners, and we discussed it, and I allowed them to make the decision at that time. But it is a case in which the Commissioners today have, have, were trying to set a precedence and a pattern that these are the issues, these kinds of issues, when it comes to, let's say, a Chamor Land Trust property that was issued as a result of them signing up, if they wanted to subdivide, for example, so they can give out portions of the properties to all their children, that it wasn't something we were going to entertain, because that wasn't the intent for giving out the Chamor Land Trust property, when in the initial onslaught of applications that select few were given 20 acres apiece in, in prime real estate areas, and then we're just waiting for the day for them to say, "Well, we now would like to subdivide that into 20 acre, 21 acre lots." And that's not what the program is about. The lease was for one individual to farm it, if you can't farm it, and in the case of some individuals, we've reduced the size of their properties, because they made violations that were grotesque. And through the compassion of the, the Commissioners, despite my recommendation to terminate, they reduced the price, the size of the lot to just enough to allow for subsistence to that family. And, and so, these cases are brought up to the Commissioners, but on a routine basis, when they have gone through, when we're going through the process, and like I explained to you before, the first thing I look at is the application date of the applicant, that of the lease I'm going to sign. And if it does not meet, if it doesn't say 1995, there's a big question, and I have to see, and I go through the rest of the documentation to find out what would cause that to be brought forward with a, with this, with a date that doesn't match 1995. But we do bring these up to the Commissioners, and in some cases, you know, while I was a Commissioner, some might have been brought up, but today, that's, that was, that's my policy.
I'd like to remind Senators that back in, when Montemotres did took over, there's quite a few of those employees that were let go, because of the fact that they were meddling around in the records and all that.
And what happened to their leases?
Pardon?
What happened to their leases?
I'm not sure what happened to them.
They were able to keep, they were able to keep the land, but they lost the job?
No, I don't believe so.
I couldn't answer that question directly, I don't know.
If there's some finagles in that particular lease, then it shouldn't be there. I mean, there should be more than.
I, I agree.
Yeah.
And I'm just saying, what you're saying and what the Administrator's Director is saying are, I'm hearing two different things. He, he says, he can't say that they lost the land, because he doesn't know, but he was a Commissioner at the time, but now I'm just trying to figure out, were those leases terminated along with their job, or did they keep the, did they lose their job and keep their 20 acres?
It's time corrected, then the Director check into that. I will have him look into it, and see if it's there.
And, is the Commission involved in any of the budget requests at all?
No. We see what he needs, and request, they're on, request for, for what he needs. We cannot tell him what he needs, and, or not, not unless there's an exorbitant amount that he's requesting, but within need.
Has the Commission or, or the Administrative Director know, with knowing that you have 1.9 million in cash, made a request of the Legislature to appropriate the 1.9 for surveys exclusively? Do you remember that request ever being made?
You know, Senator, this was done in September, and like you said, you know, when, when I saw this, the September 14, and the, and the September 13, on 13 and 14, with that kind of money, that's the first time I saw it on, on that piece of paper, that we have a million bucks.
In 13, in September 30 of 2013, you had 1.7 million?
In September 13.
Yeah. So I'm just wondering, have you guys ever made a request that that entire amount be spent for surveys?
I believe so. But we did request to, I think, the late Senator Penlin.
As I mentioned, the money that's collected goes into a fund that's been, then used for the operation of the, of the, of the Chamor Land Trust. But to go to the question, did we ever request for survey money? Yes, I did, in the fiscal year 2016 budget.
But did you request the 1.9 be directed exclusively to the-
You know, this has got to be what the budget allocation is on the top.
No. The budget allocation is, is on that horizontal sheet. And as long as you brought that up, the amount that was given to, appropriated in the last Budget Act to Chamor Land Trust was appropriated as a lump sum budget. As the Administrative Director, how much of that lump sum budget did you allocate for surveys?
It's allocated as a lump sum budget, but it goes and breaks, it's mostly broken down into, into just these kinds of costs right here.
I, I, that, those costs, you, you made the decision. That was what you sent down to BBMR. We, we sent you a budget that showed that you were going to be getting 1, 1.4. How much of the 1.4 did you, as Administrative Director, or did you advise the Commission to set aside exclusively for surveys?
When I got this latest budget, we only had enough for, to, to, for, for just operational costs. We did not have enough in there to do any other kinds of activities than what we have already been assigned to by public law, by, by other acts that the Legislature's done, like for example-
The increase that you made in your, in your personnel between '15 and '16, the increase in the rent that you had between '15 and '16 would be about equal to the 300,000 that you said that you needed for one year of survey contracts?
But those were allocated costs we had to do in accordance with the, the audits, and what we had to come up with when we were being audited, and like I said, it was a constant discussion item in all three audits about that, because they wanted to see-
The audit said that you were, you should increase your rent by 100,000?
Well, we, the only way we could come up with it to be reasonable, and it was acceptable with the auditors, was to base on the amount of size of space that they, they use in the total of the building, of our, of our rental, the square space. So we, we divided it up that way. It's not like they have, you know, an unlimited amount of space, but that was a portion of the total. And so we had to come up with that, and they wanted the documentation to show in the way of a lease, which we couldn't produce, because there is a-
What years did you serve as Chair, as a member of the Commission, before you became Director? What year were you first appointed as?
2011.
And the amount of money that was being paid for rent and for personnel in 2011?
Was zero, because they were in a government building, wandering the halls someplace else. And when they were consolidated in with Land Management, they just went right to where the building was that they were at, and they made space amongst themselves to where they would be.
Was it consolidation by statute?
It was by the Governor's action.
Thank you. And so, I'm just trying to figure out why we are now spending 1.4 million a year for the operation of the Chamor Land Trust, and not spending a penny for surveys? And even if we were to give you the authorization to do more commercial leases, how much of that was going to be specifically set aside just for surveys? In neither one of the two bills was there any lockboxing for the specific purpose of, of surveys? Was it just so that it could get, next year, we would be 2.5 million for the operation?
No.
But we need to comply with all of the OPA demands that I stand up, the fiscal section, I stand up to this, and, and I just keep adding personnel, but I'm not giving out another piece of land?
And should I fail to do that, I'm sure I would be before this committee to discuss that matter as well.
How much is the total lease DLM is paying for in the building?
It's $65,000 per month.
So, the, how much space is Chamor Land Trust taking up in that building?
They take about a third. Maybe a quarter, maybe about a quarter.
But they're paying 40% of the budget?
I don't think so.
65 times 12 is about 780. And 325?
325.
315 for this year. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Senator, have you got any questions? Okay, Senator Underwood. Um, thank you. Mr. Montanani, just in these past couple of months, there's been, we've had a number of hearings. We had an oversight hearing, I believe it was just last week, a couple of weeks ago, regarding the, the lease renewal for the municipal golf course. And were you at all privy to the discussions of that?
Yes, we have discussed it, and we were kind of leery about, you know, them being behind. But when the time came for renewal, they have complied with everything, and we have to have given that note that they have complied up to that particular year. So in renewal, we cannot just say, "Oh, you've been behind, so we don't want to renew it." So, that way is a new lease that is coming up. Actually, it's not really new, because the, the lease itself is supposed to be 50, but we were breaking it down 25, 25. And we got to give them that, that credit, that option, that they have already improved the property, and they still have 25, and if we didn't renew it, they will come back and say, "Hey, the agreement was for 50, not 25." So, you know, we're going to have problems on that. And that is my gist of thinking that, you know, in reading that particular lease, it says right there in the first liner, it says, "It's for 50, but we're breaking it down to 25."
But given the performance of that particular tenant-
Of course, they, they were behind, Senator, but they came up right when the time came.
Because it was time for renewal.
Yes, yes.
But in the previous periods before that, they were up to the point where there was a time when their delinquency was up to like $800,000?
Understood.
Yeah.
And this is my, my take on this, Senator. If we had removed them, or, or, you know, stopped the lease, and because they're not complying, or they couldn't pay, of course we have other avenues to collect that, but what are we going to do with that immense golf course, and the upkeep, and make sure that the ashes are not ruined, or broken into, and we'll have that money?
I, I agree, I agree with you.
I said, we're going to have to massage this a little bit better than, you know, and then when the time comes down, hey, we have to give and take. We cannot just say, "Oh, definitely you've been in bad," but hopefully, this time around, but with the new rules and regs, and we have a different type of avenue in renewing the leases, we got the option to say, "Hey, you're not performing as well we can, but we are going to start off with a new lease, with a better condition."
Well, you know, just during this exchange, or the responses to the questions that Vice Speaker Cruz was asking, what I was- what I was hearing was a lot of the things, like the budget, the awarding of leases for residential, I don't know, maybe a lot of other things, was pretty much left for the Administrative Director to decide. And after listening to that exchange, I started wondering, what does the Commission then do? What kind of direction does it give?
If there's any problem, like I said, you know, or he has some things that he needs to be taken care of by the Commission, then he should bring it up to us and say, okay, this is a problem, we need this to be done, and, you know, look into it and see what he has to come up with. So, yes, he does bring it up to us if he has some problems, like you said, the Chumora Golf Course there.
So if he doesn't, so if the Administrative Director doesn't bring anything up to the Commission, it's really nothing for the Commission to do?
Well...
So as opposed to driving, as opposed to driving the actions and the decisions off the Commission, it's really pretty much driven by whatever the Administrative Director puts before the Board?
Absolutely, yeah.
That's pretty much it. And are you satisfied with that? Okay, let me put the question another way then. With, just with the amount of leases that you have, that the Chumora Land Trust has right now, you're bringing in about $700,000 a year. Now, now that the rules and regs have been approved to lease out for commercial activity Chumora Land Trust properties, I imagine quite a bit more is going to come in than just the $700,000 a year. So with that, I mean, it just, the only limit is basically one's imagination as to how do you use that money in the best way possible to optimize it? And I guess, I mean, I have no problem with Mr. Bora, I think he makes good decisions. And he has good management skills. And he could drive it and figure out what he wants to do, but the Commission is there to make those kinds of decisions.
That's true.
In fact, Bill 175 states specifically that a number of these leases have to be signed by the Commissioners. So, do you see where I'm going with this?
Yes, I understand, Senator. The previous one, if you look at the Chumora Land Trust, Chapter 75, I believe, it says there that the Executive Director can sign for the Commission, can approve.
There was no qualifier to that, with the concurrence of the Commission?
Well, I might be wrong, but I believe it gives the Attorney also the authority.
So you feel comfortable basically abdicating the authority of the Commission?
I didn't say that, I didn't say that. But reading it and saying, that's what I comprehend. I mean, or the more that if he's getting the big box and I don't get the big box, that means that I have to come in and spend time with him.
Let me ask this final question. You've served on the Board now for 11 years. I mean, you've had at least, I don't know whether it's consecutive or broken service or what. But, you know, you've been on the Board for 11 years, and now you're coming on for another three. Is there anything that you would do differently in the next three? Is there anything that you, in looking back at the 11 years that you've been on the Board, what you would want to do differently in the next three years? Or pretty much do the same that you've done in the past 11 years?
Well, you need to have improvement, you know, and by being there, or it doesn't have to come from me. It could be the new ones that are coming in that can make suggestion and maybe secure more for the Chumores rather than, you know, gravel over land or for whatever reason.
So you don't really have a notion of what you want, what you would like to accomplish over the next three years during your tenure in the Commission?
Improve Chumora Land Trust, of course, and get those lands out and, you know, but once you're done with that, then it should be in hand that the Chumora Land Trust should invest so we can do, go after the other lands that are supposed to go in there, in that piece, in that, in Chumora Land Trust. Because it does belong to Chumora Land Trust. Do you understand, Senator, that we have only one-third or less land holdings compared to the public and the federal government, right? We have obstacles that we need to cross before we reach that. You understand where I'm coming from, Senator, that some lands that are returned doesn't really go back to the banking area where it's supposed to be specialized and see, and are we also asking for restitution from that particular use of land?
Are you aware of the remainder of the agenda for today with respect to what bills we're going to be discussing?
I believe the return of lands, yes, from the other agencies, yes, I am aware.
Okay.
Hopefully, it does come back. And then we will have another inventory, so we'll see if the increase is there.
Okay. All right. Well, if nobody has any questions, any further questions, do you have any closing remarks, Mr. Muthanani?
Oh, no, thank you, Senator, and I thank you again.
I just asked that you get a copy of your packet?
Yes.
And rectify those information discrepancies?
Sell us a bit to you, or...
No, you probably, you probably should submit it, it should be submitted to the, through the Speaker's office. Okay?
All right.
All right, thank you very much.
But if I could, get a copy of those.
Well, we'll at least, yeah, we'll give you the information as to where the discrepancies are, okay?
Thank you.
All right. So with that, then, there'll be no further questions. The confirmation hearing on Mr. David Muthanani has been completed. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue our public hearing. Next on the agenda is the Bill Number 192-33. And with that, nobody has signed up. Did Land Management have any, Mr. Merritt, did you have any things you wanted? Okay. All right, fine. Mike, none. Okay, what I want to do is, I just want to go ahead and have my staff just give, on each of these bills, spend just a minute, just to show, just to orient us as to where these pieces of properties are that are going to be returned back to the Land Trust inventory. So with Bill Number 192-33, it's an act to amend Public Law 2218 to transfer 35 acres of Lot 10122R18, municipality of Dedido, reserved by the Department of Education for the Astumbo Elementary School to the Chumora Land Trust inventory for residential and agricultural leasing. So if you go ahead and just give us an orientation of where these properties are.
Committee members, the first lot that's in question under Bill 192 and 193, they're both basically the same lot. And this is the official map for the lot. This area here actually is the golf course. This straight line here, straight road, is the Batula Road. And the lot actually is kind of an odd shape. It has a long, single lake here, and then a big portion here. And then right in the middle of that lot is another lot that's severed out. This is another map that shows the general location. And this one in yellow shows the actual lot and some of the streets around the lot. And the next slide that we'll put up is actually an aerial photograph of the area. Also, committee members, inside your folders are hard copies of these maps here. This is the northern part, northern portion of the lot. This is the Sengsung, this is Swamp Road, this is the government of Guam Coral Pit, this is Lada Estates, this is Dedido Village, and this is the golf course here. And again, this is just the upper portion. The subdivision over here, I believe, is the Pau Pau.
So the entire shaded area is the 35 acres?
The entire, no, no, sir, the entire lot is about 424 acres.
Oh, I see.
And this is one of the issues with the reservation, is that under Public Law 2218, Department of Education was allocated 35 acres of the property. Again, Public Law 2218, I think, was passed back in 1993, and Department of Education has yet to cut out their 35 acres. However, in this particular piece of property, there were pre-existing land use permits. The Public Law 2338 prohibits the eviction of people that are on the property there with land use permits, as well as people that were on the property six months before December 1995. This is a Gura subdivision here. This is that heavy recycling, metal recycling area. This is the solid waste transfer station, or former solid waste transfer station. And then over here is the Dedido GPA power plant. And of course, this is Dedido Village. The lot that was reserved for the acreage, the 35 acres that was reserved for the school in Public Law 2218 was specific for the Astumbo Elementary School and the Astumbo Middle School. This lot actually, though, is not in Astumbo. Astumbo's actually over here. And this large white building here is actually Astumbo Elementary School and Astumbo Middle School, which have already been built. I believe they were completed in 2008 and 2009. And this is just a larger vicinity map of the area. The golf course, the approximately 180 acres. And this is actually where Astumbo Elementary School and Astumbo Middle School are now located in Astumbo.
Okay, so with the 35 acres, it's not specific as to which quadrant it's in?
No, sir. In the, in the Public Law 2218, basically, the reservation just says 35 acres within that 424 acres, without being specific where. DOE might have a problem now trying to find a contiguous 35 acres. There might be 35 acres available inside that lot, but it may be one acre here, five acres here, three acres here, but not necessarily in one lot.
So the bill then is going to require a little bit more specificity as to maybe carving out 35 acres, let's say, in the north, northwestern segment of the, of that 400, or whatever, the 400 acre, the total acreage?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
But again, you know, they're going to have to find a 35-acre contiguous piece, one piece.
Let's take a look. So then, that basically is what Bill 192 is about. So we're basically proposed, the bill basically proposes to take back, put back 35 acres into the inventory, which is property, acreage that was set aside to build the Astumbo Elementary School, which was in fact already constructed. I believe it was in, I forget exactly the year.
2007 or 2009 is when they first opened.
Right. Okay. All right. Any questions on this?
Yes.
I do, Mr. Chair. Was DOE notified of this public hearing, and were they...
Yeah, they were notified. We had a meeting, actually, I think it was last week or...
I think it was last week.
I think it was last week. The Chairperson for the Committee on Public Education, and myself as the Chairperson for the Committee on Lands, we sat down with DOE, and we showed them where these properties are and what's the rationale for wanting to go ahead. So in other words, property that was originally set aside to build Astumbo Elementary is still there, but Astumbo Elementary has now been constructed in a different location. So therefore...
So were they okay with the revisions of these properties back to...
Well, they, the Superintendent came back and said he, his objection, and the text was, and it was a text message, was that they wanted to save it as a bargaining chip for lands that they may need in the future, which I don't, I don't agree with. When DOE needed land to build the Astumbo Elementary, GovGuam gave them the land that they needed. So to suggest that to hold this property back as a bargaining chip, I think, they're not even sure where where they're going to build the next school. But land will be still there. If in the future DOE says, we need this much acreage in the north somewhere, I'm sure that that amount of land will be found to accommodate it.
I just want to express my disappointment that DOE is not here to testify on this bill.
Mr. Chairman, I did receive a text message from DOE that they will have a written testimony for each of the bills and with their recommendations.
Okay. I would think that it's such an important issue that they would be here personally to express that objection to this. I mean, this is, we're talking about future schools being built, you know, as our population grows. And when the department doesn't take that issue seriously, I do have a concern with that to where it's, they don't see it to be that important to hold these lands for future schools. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. So we'll consider Bill 192 as having been duly heard. Bill 193 is a similar bill to return, to transfer back 35 acres that was reserved under the same law. And there's nobody that has signed up to provide testimony on that. But this was land that was reserved to build the Astumbo Middle School. And the Astumbo Middle School was actually constructed, the school was, 2008, 2009, opened the newly constructed Astumbo Middle School, comprising of approximately 23 acres. And so again, this was, this is property that is, that the bill proposes to return, which was initially reserved to build the school, which was built seven years ago in a different location. So maybe you can just kind of orient us where that property is.
Again, this is the property in question, Lot 10122-R18. And Astumbo Middle School has been built in this area. It's the two white buildings there, actually. There's actually three buildings in that lot, Astumbo Elementary, Astumbo Middle School, and the Astumbo Gym.
Can you just point out, using this graphic here, where generally is this 400 acres that was...
The 424 acres, sir, right around here. Right about here.
That's 400 acres?
400 acres, it's quite a big piece, keeping in mind that this is 180 acres, the golf course. So it's approximately that size and a long strip coming down this way.
Okay. All right. So we're talking about freeing up land or returning that property back to the Chumora Land Trust? Okay. Okay. Again, this was part of the discussion that we had when we met with DOE last week. Yes?
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify for the audience, again, our understanding when we met regarding this property is that even though there are like, what, 400 acres or how many acres, 35 acres that were initially allocated for DOE, there isn't enough acreage in that long strip of property, given that there are homes that have already been built there, right?
That's correct. Actually, 10122-R18 was further subdivided into about 37 other pieces, about 37 acres for Chamorro Land Trust leases in the area.
So that with what we're talking about there, even if we wanted to build this school and we had the funding right now, that particular piece of property just doesn't have enough space?
Yes, you might have a problem. That's correct, Senator. Also, keep in mind that Okudu High School was built on Chamorro Land Trust property when this property was available to DOE, but it wasn't optional because of the size and the problem of getting 35 acres together into one piece.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. There's no questions on Bill 193. We'll go to Bill 194. It's an act to transfer Lot 3463 in Agania Heights to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for residential and agricultural leasing. And there's been no one that signed up to provide testimony. But we'll go ahead and we'll give a brief orientation of where this property is.
Again, Senators, this is the official map for basic lot 3463. And this comprises of approximately 38 acres in the municipality of Agania Heights. When we think of Agania Heights, we usually think of the gym area, the mayor's office, and the village. But this is actually outside of the village. And that's the map and this is an aerial photograph of actually where the lot is. This is the road to Nimitz Hill, Route 6. And this is the village of Agania Heights. The church is right here, the Agania Heights Church. And this is the property that is in question. It has a little bit of a knot shape. It has the military POL line, petroleum oil line, goes, going through it. And also going through it is the 34 KV line, maybe not going through it exactly, but close to it. And it is also, I believe, in the flight pattern approaching the airport. This is the vortex site and this is the Korean Airlines crash site. So planes coming into the airport actually pass, you know, on top of it. The dark areas that you see here, this is a ravine, and the darker areas are actually lower areas where the water collects and turns the vegetation pretty much green. Coming up from Maena, make that sharp end turn, this is that steep hill. This is the Japanese command post right here. And I believe this might be the old Kamnafmar area. So if you're going up that hill or towards Nimitz Hill, towards Kamnafmar area, there you see a couple of private residence here. If you look to your left, kind of behind you a little bit, this is the property in question, Lot 3463.
I have a question. So, Mr. Borja, what's the total acreage again here?
I believe that one's about 38.83 acres.
Okay. So there's that pipeline, so we, so the property is actually divided in, are we able to, if we wanted to, are we able to build over the, with the pipeline going through? We can't, right?
No, ma'am. It's actually a, there's another map that most people in Guam don't see, and that's the pipeline network that the military has on Guam. Guam has probably the largest military gas station on the borough. It stretches from the naval supply depot, those tanks behind the veteran cemetery, and those storage tanks, above-ground storage tanks, are actually connected to what they call the fuel wharf, which is out there by what they call Family Beach, which is across the.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we understand. So basically, what you're saying is that this really is not conducive, again, even though there are 38, I was going to say 38 miles.
38 acres.
Acres of land here. Part of it is in the ravine and then we actually have the pipeline.
Yes, ma'am.
So that, that's part of the problem that we have. And there really isn't any infrastructure there that's available?
No, ma'am. Actually, maybe the most serious issue with this lot is the flight pattern, the approach zone. As, like I said, this is where the Korean airline Flight 803 crashed.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. We're reverting this back to Chamorro Land Trust. What would we be able to build there? Would we be able to put housing up there or?
You might be able to put some housing in there. Of course, there would be the planes passing through. The ravine actually has some rivers and streams there. Could be an aquaculture farm. Some people like to live off the grid, you know, so probably not the entire 38 acres might be conducive to residential and agricultural leases, but certainly some parts of the property are.
Would we be finding ourselves back into a situation where we're going to give out leases and then there's no infrastructure in the area that, you know, the families will come back?
But that's for CLTC to answer.
Yeah. Well, that's why I'm just, I'm just trying to.
But basically, what we're trying to do with the bills is to account for these acreages and to say, this was set aside for, to build Astumbo Elementary, that's been built, but it wasn't built here. Therefore, we can transfer back 35 acres to increase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So there's no further questions on Bill 194. The last one is Bill 195, which is an act to amend Public Law 2218 to transfer Lot 3470 in the municipality of Chalampago Reserve for Guam's health care needs to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for residential and/or agricultural leasing. This property was actually set aside to build, it was specifically identified to build, I believe, the foster home. There were some other facilities by the public, no, was it Public Health? Yeah, Public Health also. But they've pretty much stepped forward when they were looking for land for the, it's in 195, right?
Yes, sir.
They stepped forward and they said, "No, we don't want to build it here. We want to build it up in," at first, they wanted to build it in Tamooning or they want it, and then eventually they landed up at Barigata Heights. And I believe, I forget how much acreage was set aside for that, 7 acres. And then there was Chamorro, they needed land to build the mosquito lab. And there was, again, land that was identified in this area. They didn't want to build it there. They said it was, it was not conducive to construction. And so they built it up in Dedidoo and another piece of Chamorro Land Trust property. Okay, go ahead and proceed. Signing up to testify on this bill is, well, Mr. Casil is not here. Were you going to testify?
Yes.
Okay, fine. All right. Okay. And also Mayor Gogli. So Mayor Gogli, you can step forward and, but as a matter of orientation, this is the property that we're talking about. So maybe just kind of give us an orientation.
This is the ordered landfill or closed landfill. This is the road up to Leo Palace. And this is the lot, actually, this is Chalant Santa Cruz. And I believe this is Chilenko Road that passes through the area where the baseball sports facilities are. Interesting to note that the southern boundary of this property is actually the Ascenan River, which eventually comes out at Pago Bay. And the river there has been tracked with lichaid from the ordered landfill and flows down this way on towards Pago Bay. This is Route 4 going up to Jonya, going up to Mangila, and this is the road that passes in front of the church, Chalampago Church.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Go ahead and tell them a little bit. So we'll start with Mayor Gogli.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Senators. Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to testify on this, this particular bill. And Senator Cruz, Senator Unwood, Senator Ada, thank you for being here as well. Obviously, you know, I want to, you know, to reinforce Senator Ada's comments regarding people that have an interest on this property for not being here. But in this particular case, one of the things that I wanted to highlight and use as justification as my opposition at this point in time to turn over any part of this land to the Chamorro Land Trust, is as we were hearing, listening into the testimony, or at least the confirmation hearing for Mr. Mantanani for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, there's still a lot of problems. And returning lands to the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, who has yet to resolve problems that are currently existing within their inventory, is, may not be, you know, in the best interests of the government at this point in time. I, you know, and I also wanted to point out that I have known the administrative director for Department of Land Management since we were teenagers. And I have the utmost respect for Mr. Borja. As a matter of fact, in the three, four, actually, four directors that have been in charge of land management since I've taken office back in 2009, I can attest here before this committee that Mr. Borja has been the most responsive director regarding land management issues that I've ever dealt with since my time as mayor. With regard to this particular lot, you know, there are in fact some concerns that there may already be some Chamorro Land Trust uses of this property because at the end of Chalant-Chilenko Road, which Mr. Borja pointed out, Joe had pointed out, there is actually a family living at the end of that road. If you, if you don't mind?
Yeah. Here. Here. See you.
I'm not good at these things, so. So right at the end of the road, that's Chalant-Chilenko, as Joe had pointed out. So at the end of that road, there is a, the Seguensa family living on that piece of property or at the end of that road, and they have a Chamorro Land Trust lease. And in addition to that, if Joe had not shaded this area, there's actually an agricultural area that, or an area within this lot that's currently being used by an individual who's farming the area. And so then the question becomes, has the Chamorro Land Trust already taken some, some kind of authority over Lot 3470 to issue out leases related to this property? And we would talk about Public Law 2218. 3470 involved several agencies, and I'm glad you were looking for it because I did this years ago when it was brought to my attention that there were government of Guam properties within my district to include Lot 3470. In that particular law, there's, it referenced that there was 117.94 acres, roughly 35 acres to the Department of Education for a middle school, didn't name a middle school. And to some extent, that's an important component of this particular lot. Because down in this area here, if you recall, this was property that Dwight Look had obtained, however he obtained it, but ultimately turned over to the Texas A&amp;M Trust or Foundation, Texas A&amp;M Foundation. And over the last couple of years, there's been a group that has been proposing a high-density development called the Seagull Highlands Development, which would encompass 5,000 residential units within that property belonging to Texas A&amp;M. In fact, I believe there's two proposed tower complexes for elderly. Each tower would contain 925 units. So that's a total of 1,850 units. And then the rest of them would be high-density townhomes type units, just all in this area. 5,000 residential units in close proximity to this lot, which is, this would be 5,000 units, is more residential homes than I currently have in order in Chalampago combined. And if you take a look at the only middle school that services order Chalampago, which is Argada Johnson Middle School, Senator Underwood would tell you, we're already over capacity, like almost a couple of hundred people. Argada Johnson was designed to roughly hold about 800 people, 750. And we're, the current population for Argada Johnson Middle School is already over 1,000 students. And so for the Department of Education not to be here to emphasize that something needs to be available for them to expand, you know, school and school capacity within the central part of the village is necessary. To turn this over to Land Trust, the entire 117 acres, has me concerned. You know, because I'm not just looking at what's going on today, I'm looking at what may potentially happen 10 years from now, 15 years from now, 50 years from now, you know, by the time you and I are both all gone. And so inclusive of this, I wanted to point out, was 35 acres for construction of a middle school. In fact, my contention is, is we're probably going to need to not only build a middle school, but even with Tezen High School, should the central part of the island grow, and I fully expect it to grow, and you take a look at Orde Chalampago and its location respective to all the other districts, we're at the center of this island. We are between, almost a dead between Jigo and Yamatic. And what better place to develop than the center part of your island? Because then those people that are occupying the properties inside Orde Chalampago are halfway between anything, you know? They're halfway between Jigo and Yamatic, halfway between Dedidoo and Aget, halfway between.
Okay.
So I'm sure you get my point. And so as I go through this list of what I summarized with regard to 3470, you had a Guatemalan hospital, you know, being authorized, also 35 acres for an acute care hospital. Whether that occurs or not, I don't know. But we won't know what the medical needs are for this island community, you know, for the next, or in 10 years from now or 20 years from now. We can anticipate it, but it could change. As a matter of fact, there was Dr. Shea on K-57 radio yesterday talking to Patty Arroyo, or no, I think it was Philly Younger, but one of the two, but he was on the radio yesterday. And he said that on the average, there are 2,000 births on this island every year, 2,000 new lives that we bring into this island every year. And that doesn't include the migration of people that come into this island. So over the course of 10 years, we're going to have 20,000 new bodies, new warm bodies.
So in essence, what I, where I see you going with this is that what was initially reserved decades ago, that it probably should be kept intact for decades to come, just in case?
Well, I think, I think in fact it should be. Yes, sir.
Uh huh. Okay.
You know, and more importantly, it's not necessarily decades to come, but until we can, until we can correct the problem, the obvious problems that exist within Chamorro Land Trust Commission, you know, and that they have proven performance, that leases are going to go out, and more importantly, infrastructure is going to be brought in, you know, lands are going to be surveyed, infrastructure is going to be brought in to properties that are under their control.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out where the source of the objection is. Is it because of a vote of no confidence in the commission? Or because we don't quite know where we're going yet? So until we do, we should just leave that land the way it was reserved to be used decades ago, just in case, in fact, you know, it happens?
Well, it's both, Senator.
Both.
It's actually both.
All right. I just wanted to know. So it's both, a vote of no confidence in the commission, that they don't know what to do with this, and the fact that... to do with this, and the fact that maybe we just might need it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, you know, and again, I can't, you know, underemphasize or overemphasize, you know, what I consider to be the importance of Orde Chalampago as far as it's, you know, we talk about strategic location, as far as its location with respective to everything else on this island. And so, you know, I just fully expect that, in fact, if you recall, when they did the 2010 census, they reported out, Bureau of Statistics and Plans reported out the preliminary census for 2010. Orde Chalampago netted the highest growth of all 19 districts.
Okay. All right.
And so, you know, those are the things that ultimately concern me, is that, you know, we can, we can take a look at trying to add it back into the inventory, survey the properties, give out leases and, you know, agricultural leases and residential leases. I just, I'm concerned that we're going to do more than that. You know, over time, things change, and we're going to give out commercial leases. And so, you know, that we take 20 acres out of this chunk and give it to somebody who wants to do a quarry, we take 20 acres out of this chunk and give it to somebody who wants to do, you know, light industrial development. We've already had problems that was created because of, you know, the location and existence of the ordered dump. In fact, a couple of years ago, I was challenged with an application before the Guam Land Use Commission to take property directly across to the ordered dump and convert that or, you know, rezone that to light industrial. Luckily, fortunately for us, we were able to argue and convince the Guam Land Use Commission to disapprove it to be converted into a light industrial.
Okay.
And so, those are the things that I'm concerned about, is that we take these properties and, you know, intentions are all well and good, that we want to give out more agricultural and residential leases. I just see this as a potential, you know, victim of being leased out for more commercial purposes than anything else, because there is no infrastructure. And so the motivation might be, well, we'll give it to a commercial, you know, entity because they will bring, they'll pay for bringing in the infrastructure, and that's not a bad thing. But what kind of commercial leases are we going to, are we going to grant? And I have yet to fully feel as a mayor that when these public hearings are done at the Chamor Land Trust Commission or the Guam Land Use Commission affecting, you know, certain districts, that we get properly notified, oh, by the way, we're having a public hearing to rezone or to approve a lease. They very seldom, you know, give us a direct notice like the legislature does, we are going to hear these following bills. And that these hearings go without notice to the respective mayors to argue in favor and/or against these issues.
Have you had a chance to read Bill 175?
I didn't read it, and it's tired.
Yeah. So I hope that you'll get a copy of that?
I will. I certainly will.
And then maybe, you know, maybe the level of confidence in the Chamor Land Trust and the disposition of properties might change, hopefully, so.
I will read it. And you know that I do.
Yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Okay.
All right. So is there anything else on 195?
No. I just, you know, just real quick, so the committee is fully aware, that it's not just Public Health. And in fact, technically, by the passage of Bill 287 and the passage of Bill 90-33, the properties owned by Public Health that they authorized the exchange for is done, it just needs to be recorded. Because that bill specifically stated that their portion, now, we don't know what, you know, seven acres that they switched, they traded off, where that's located, but sure, I mean, if somebody wants to survey seven acres of land and turn it over to the Chamor Land Trust at this point in time, that's, I don't have a problem with that because that was already passed and signed into law, or signed into law, which allows that to occur. But the remaining 110 acres to turn over to the Chamor Land Trust Commission at this point in time is not something I'm real in favor of.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. Ms.? You're reading Mr. Casil's testimony?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. State your name for the record, please.
Hafid, Mr. Chairman and Senators and Vice Speaker. My name is Annette Ugin. I'm currently the Acting Administrator for the Bureau of Communical Disease Control under the Division of Public Health at the Department of Public Health and Social Services. My acting director extends his apologies, but he was called away for an emergency at 1:30, so I will be just reading the testimony submitted in writing. Dear Senator Ada, we have reviewed Bill Number 195-33, which proposes to transfer Lot 3470, municipality of Chalampago, reserved for Guam's healthcare needs, to the Chamor Land Trust Commission for residential and/or agricultural leasing. The proposed facilities listed under Public Law 22-18, Section 2B for the department, shows eight facilities, of which three have been completed. Although we do not have immediate plans or funding to develop the sites listed for a senior nursing home, Tanumanumco elderly facility, and Trend Kiladot Number 2, we would request that these lots remain dedicated to the intent of providing options for development that would evolve as we position to address the needs of our elders and public health through alternate options. For example, we are currently working and still developing initiatives for unassisted living. We are also applying to expand for an adult daycare facility for the elderly where the current Inner Haun Senior Center is located on. We are also very close in obtaining a Level 2, Level 3 testing laboratory in anticipation of the military buildup. Knowing there is land available for consideration for the use of assisted living facilities, expansion for an adult daycare facility, and building a public health laboratory would place us in a better position than not having any properties to consider. These three facilities alone will cost millions of dollars, but also, as important, will need for the land to be built on. Although the intent of Bill 19533 is commendable, we cannot support the transferring of the properties for the Department of Public Health and Social Services to the Chamor Land Trust Commission at this time, and respectfully request alternate sites for the projects to be provided, we are currently working on for our elders and public health for our community. We have attached a schematic drawing of the proposed public health lab for your information, and will be happy to meet with you to provide additional justification for the assisted living and request to expand on adult daycare center in Inner Haun, including any other developments which will require land to build on. Thank you for the opportunity in providing our comments for Bill 195-33, signed by Mr. Leo Casil on behalf of our director, Mr. James W. Gillen.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, do you, then, this attachment here for a public health laboratory, this is in addition to what's already up, what was constructed up north?
Correct, sir. The one built in Deddo is specific for mosquito vector-borne illnesses. This attachment is specific for a public health lab for human testing, specimen testing. The current laboratory at the central facility is inadequate. It needs, it does not have enough space for expansion. The location of Lot 347 doesn't have the proper infrastructure, and so we are requesting to see an alternate site because the cost to just even build the infrastructure before we can build the facility is, would be inexorable, so.
Is there any anticipation on when, how soon the next lab might be constructed?
Actually, we are only on Phase 1 out of four phases, and Phase 1 is the approval of the schematic and the drawings. Phase 2 is actually identifying a piece of land, and it is approximately 4.5 acres is estimated in order for us to move on to Phase 2 and 3 and 4.
What kind of timeframe I might be looking at for Phase 2?
Well, I know the issue, I'm not aware of the exact timeframe, sir. I know that Department of Interior has been assisting us, there's been an estimate of roughly $13 million for this project. The issue is a piece of property that has already existing infrastructure so that then the next phase can move on to starting the building phase.
So probably, it's very likely that the next lab facility that Public Health will probably be asking to build it, probably adjacent to the mosquito lab in Deddo, there's also Chamor Land Trust property there, it's got infrastructure, they'll probably be asking to build it there too, don't you think?
Most likely, sir. There was talk about in Deddo, and if it's adequate space near the mosquito lab, then that has been brought in initial discussions internally within our department.
So what Department of Public Health is looking at is to maybe, that probably they're going to ask to build it on Chamor Land Trust property in Deddo, but keep the property, keep the acreage in here, just for, I don't know, for what?
Or perhaps just to, again, similar to the foster home and to the, to transfer out.
So we want that, and we want to keep that too.
I believe, sir, that they're also leaning towards possibly swapping because the infrastructure at the Orde Chalampago lot is non-existent, and so we do not want to delay the progress that has been made already with this public health laboratory proposal. And it is our hope that we have something within the next five years, only in anticipation of the military buildup, the concern of us being the hub for the other U.S.-affiliated islands, proximity to Asia, and the need to bring our laboratory capacity up to par and to strengthen it.
Okay. All right. I can see where it'd be kind of problematic then if the Chamor Land Trust decided to lease out that property, its property in Deddo for agriculture, I mean, for residential.
Yes, sir.
Because then that may not be available for the lab.
Correct, sir.
Right? Yeah, that would be problematic.
Yes, sir.
But the purpose of the Chamor Land Trust is to lease out residential and agricultural property, not to build laboratories.
Yes, sir. Totally noted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, do you have?
Yeah, and as pointed out earlier, you know, the bills that authorize the exchange of land for the foster care and for the mosquito facility up in Deddo already authorized the one-for-one exchange, not value-for-value, but acreage-for-acreage exchange of land. And so, the Chamor Land Trust ergo has a segment of land through that bill or through the law, the public law that was signed, to carve out their seven acres. And if they want to do that, and, you know, they want to survey seven acres, we don't have a problem with that because that transfer has been done. In fact, I'm trying to track these things. And so, they can do that today, technically, because they have exchanged Chamor Land Trust property up north for the land here. But to turn over the remaining 110 acres of the.
See, Mr. Mayor, the issue was, in an earlier hearing, Department of Public Health came in and said, that land there is the armpit of the world, and that they don't want to build there. They want to build on nice flat ground in Deddo or in Tamooning or in Baragata Heights. And they came in here, and we can pull up those records, where they basically said, we don't want to have that, because when that was selected, it was selected based on a tabletop survey. This looks like a nice green area here. And then when they actually did a terrain walk, they found like it was hills and dills and.
Yes, yes.
And so, and so they basically came in here and says, that's good for Guado, but it's not good to build, it's not going to be a place that we would want to consider.
And I wasn't here at that particular hearing, and I certainly hope that Public Health didn't use the term "armpit of the world."
I'm sorry. I take that back.
You know.
Just, no, not for Chalampago, just that piece, just that piece.
And so, because I would certainly have remembered that, and I would have taken offense.
No, no, no. I mean, I thought about that piece there for development.
Understood, understood. And it is, it is challenging terrain, it lacks infrastructure at this point in time. But, you know, take a look, take a look at, take a look at a lot of the things that we have built in challenging terrain. At one point in time 50 years ago, you know, nobody probably would have thought that you would see high-rises over at Oka Point, you know, that, you know, was delayed, but nonetheless, you know, Jonestown was built on the other side of those high-rises, because, well, no, you can't build there.
Okay.
But, I mean, with today's technology and today's creativity, the land is viable.
Okay. Oh, we're not saying that land is worthless. I mean, it's, you can, I mean, I thought Property 2 in Tumon where you couldn't give it away, but with construction technology.
Exactly.
We're able to build things. Okay, great. All right. So with that, we'll consider Bill 195 as having been duly heard. And now, we have Bill 196, which is an act to transfer 400-plus lots which have lapsed into foreclosure from the land for the landless, from all the land for the landless subdivisions and all other such subdivisions to the Chamor Land Trust Commission's available lands inventory for Chamor Homelands. I don't have anybody that signed up for this. Mr. Borja, you don't have any comments to make on?
Good afternoon again, Senators. You know, my only concern on the land for the landless transfer is that there exists some of the applicants who did submit a payment greater than the initial $250 payment, and then stopped making the payment because their pieces of property were totally insufficient for their needs. There was no road, there was no infrastructure. Other properties, though, you know, that were given out or available for land for the landless were quite suitable. They had infrastructure, they had roads. And so my concern would be, and I'm quite surprised that, you know, there aren't any people that were on this list that are not present, but there are a number of people who did make partial payments, and they quit making their payments because the property wasn't good. So what do we do with their money? The law doesn't allow us to do anything, you know, to give a refund or whatnot. The law was really specific too, that, you know, it talked about interest. If you didn't make your payment today, we estimate that if you didn't make your full $2,500 payment by today and you still had $2,250 still outstanding, you'd have to be paying an additional $10,000 just on interest.
But what did the law say, how much time they had?
The law did, the law was very specific. It said that they had 10 years.
10 years.
And so, 20 years have since passed. One of my predecessors, early on in this administration, made, sent out notices to all the applicants who had not been, who had not paid their dues. And some came forward and concluded their payments and now have received the deeds for their lands. But though, and, but that wasn't the group, and there are still a significant number of people who have made no payments. So, you know, for those who didn't go forward with anything else, I can understand, you know, the removal of them from the list. But for those who did make, you know, like a $1,000 payment and they still, you know, we owe them, we may owe them some money, and they may have an axe to grind concerning that. But that would be the issue that I would have if we seize it and they had some pending balances and they made some significant amounts of payments.
So now, based on your 2011 report that came out of Department of Land Management, Land Management had identified 434 of these lots. Do you think there's 434 such individuals that you described? So let's say 100 of them. So let's say 100 of them may have a legitimate, legitimate case. That still leaves, you know, 334 lots, which as I understand it, these lots have already been, pretty much been surveyed.
Yes.
And basically, it's got infrastructure and.
Most of them. The biggest one that would be the problem child of the Land for the Landless program would be the IHA subdivision down in Inner Haun.
Inner Haun, right.
And that's the one where a lot of people there just quit making payments when they realized that they didn't have the infrastructure available to do anything on their land, so they stopped. That would be my only concern. How do we reconcile those issues if they came barking at our door? And that was where my concern is. But for, on the whole, you know, I mean, some of the, some of the things I heard on people wanting to, on what they want to do with their land, and after having seen what land they gave up and didn't want to pay for, I'm quite astounded because there's some gorgeous properties out there in the Land for the Landless program, in Talafofa, in Yamatic, I mean, there's some really gorgeous properties. And, you know, if they have the infrastructure already, the Chamor Land Trust would love to be able to give out a residential lease to these immediately.
Sure. So is, is, would the, do you think the Chamor Land Trust would be opposed to transferring these 434 lots and back to the Chamor, to the land inventory, and then you guys basically have to sort out which area is, I mean, as I understand it, some of these land for the landless are like on the side of a hill, probably good to grow pineapple, but certainly probably not the best place to build a house. And, but, would, do you think that the Chamor, that the Commission would be supportive of adding to its inventory this 434 lots?
Adding the lots that were, where no one made any attempt to make any payment, yes, of course. Adding the lots that were, where no one made any attempt to make any payment, yes, of course. We would love to do that. But like I said, I still have some concerns about those who have maybe $400 balance, $1,000 balance on their payment and have to come forward. I mean, what I would suggest, perhaps, is that the law sets a time limit, six months from enactment, and says, "You don't come forward by that time and make your payment in full to include the interest, then you're gone."
That's fair enough, and I appreciate that, you know, how we might kind of bring balance to that. And I certainly understand what you're saying about those who, for one reason or another, just kind of stop short of the goal line. How do we bring them into the fold? Okay, great. I guess there's nobody else to give testimony? Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Borah?
Yes, sir.
You were saying about the interest. How much was the interest for...?
The law did spell out how much the interest was. Off the top, I couldn't tell you what the percentage was. But when my folks told me, we were talking about this the other day, it was if someone had a balance of $2,250 or even the $2,500, that they didn't even pay the initial $250, they would pay that principal plus about $10,000 in interest. So it would come out close, over $12,000 that they'd be having to pay just to make do.
I know you mentioned about six months after, you know, after the bill, if the bill passes, that, you know, they come in to settle the financial part of their lease. Do you think, I mean, there's a reason why they stopped, whether it was financial difficulties or whatever it may be? Do you think maybe 18 months instead of six months would be...?
I lead that up to your discretion. I was just making a suggestion of some period of time in the future, whatever it would be. But that was really one of the big problems. Land-for-the-landless, you can understand, was for those without land. And those without land, in many cases, were those without any kind of other means to help support the payment of this property purchase. And, you know, they had...
It's good to see the compassionate sight come out to see that we just don't want to take their money and throw them back out onto the streets with a piece of property without finding a remedy for them to actually take repossession of that property and say, "You know what? Here's a second chance at it, and we'll go ahead and do this for the next 18 months. And if you don't come in after that 18-month period, then it will revert back to Chamorro."
And we did have, we did give them that one opportunity already, but this might be the last, the ultimate last chance. Because we did make contact, and like I said, some, a group came forward, and we processed them. They made their payments. We processed them, and so they have their deeds.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
But how much did you collect in that last set of payments? How much did you collect in that last set of payments?
Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you. But I could tell you that if everybody paid just their principal alone on the outstanding leases that are out there, or outstanding applications that are out there, it'd be just under $800,000.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, now I understand what Vice Speaker Ted Nelson was testifying about the last time we had the hearing, when we were talking about the Bill 175. He was insisting that the money that we receive from the purchase of land for the landless go into the survey fund for Chamorro Land Trust. And so that if and when any of those people come forward, maybe there's some amendment to the bill that would address what Vice Speaker Ted Nelson was talking about, that any amount of money collected goes into the Chamorro Land Trust Operations Fund to expand and enlarge the pool, so that there's more money for surveys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, we deem Bill Number 196 as having been publicly heard. And with that, we have exhausted the agenda, and... And so with that, then, the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs, and Procurement hereby adjourns this public hearing. The time is now 4:45. 3:45. We are adjourned.